Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below on Zoom. Para acceder a traducción, aprieten el botón del globo en Zoom. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we're here to listen to any public comment there might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we'll be discussing are conference with legal counsel and existing litigation, conference with legal counsel and public employee discipline dismissal release, and public employee appointment for director of curriculum and instruction. Do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. We will be back for open session at 6:30. Thank you so much. ... tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below on the Zoom app or here at Dejounte, you can go to the corner of the room to get the materials. Para acceder a traducción, aprieten el botón del globo en Zoom o aquí en Dejounte pueden ir a la esquina del gimnasio. We are returning from our closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board recently voted to change public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last now one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you're attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned into staff, they are placed in order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and switch between public comment at Dejounte and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine of accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers is permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, the board, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we have the pledge of allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now for our land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chucheno Muekma Karkanaloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Dr. Hurst, could you please take roll call?
Absolutely. President Gonzalez Toy.
Present.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening to everyone. I'm present.
Trustee Phillips. Absent. Trustee Christian.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Present.
Student trustee Tristan Calip.
Good evening, President.
Student trustee Anaya Cypercer.
Cypercer, present.
All present except for one.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Do we have anything to report from closed session?
Yes, sir. We'd like to report out that the board approved Ms. Sanji Bell as our next Director of Curriculum Instruction. The vote was as follows. President Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Clerk Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. And trustee Phillips, absent. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. Now we're going to move to public comment. Ms. Munoz and Ms. Cornejo, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain. I have PTE Local 21 as a chapter president. I am here this evening to say thank you very much for keeping us very well informed as a community and a school district, staff and teacher, everybody, personnel on the air quality. It was a very concerning issue for many of us. I appreciate all the direct communication that came at various points over the last 24 hours. Thank you. I would also like to say thank you very much to the board and the school district for continuing to look for avenues of student and staff achievement and progress in their learning. We will be having multiple avenues October 9th for our staff classified particularly to learn and grow and become healthier people. We will be having AED training. We will be also looking towards various areas of Google trainings, cyber safety, because October will be our safety month for technology. And that is a huge issue around the world, making sure everybody is safe online. Thank you very much for making sure that happens for our classified people. And if any of you would like to teach us something or join us, we would be more than happy to have you. Thank you.
Our next public comment. Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Um. Part of me is like, I wasn't gonna say anything and then I'm just gonna be honest, you know, God told me to say this. So I was gonna talk about how at Kennedy, things have been really going well. I said, thank you for the district support. Continue to support Ms. McGee in the transition of the new administration. But two hours ago, I found out that my uncle died. And I'm having a hard time. Even in the midst of all of this, I'm like, do I go to work tomorrow? Do I go to work Friday? My kids need me. And then it's like, when do I take care of me? So I'm really struggling right now of like, do I just push through? Do I go tomorrow? Or just push through? Do I go Friday? Like, I really don't know. And like I said, it's just hard. My uncle is the first person that I can remember who lived his life unapologetically. He didn't hurt nobody, but he lived his life unapologetically. So I know even though he is gone from his flesh, that I know he's in a better place, but I know he lived his life with no regrets and no apologies. And that's one thing I do try to, you know, work with my kids on and living your best life. Don't hurt nobody, be kind, be loving, be patient, be forgiving with people. And that's also what I want to show to everybody. All we have is today. How do we treat each other today? Because tomorrow's not promised, the next moment is not promised. And we all have our passions and everything, but how do we treat each other and talk to each other and leave an interaction? So that's all I got and have a good night.
Our next public comment is Suji Dugan.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst, trustees and administration. My name is Suji and I'm a speech therapist in this district. With me this evening is my infant son and my partner online on Zoom and on his way driving over here after work. I'm here today with my family because I've not been paid in full for August, which has severely impacted me and my family's ability to access our basic needs. At the end of August, I learned that a few thousand dollars was missing from my paycheck. We are a dual income household, but this is a huge amount for us. This has not only impacted us financially, but as a new mother, it has added undue stress. In order to remedy the situation, I have been emailing for weeks. In turn, I was met with nonchalance to make it seem unreasonable that I was asking about my pay, also known as gaslighting. It is now September 20th and I still don't know when I'll get paid. I learned that my payment authorization paperwork sat in the special education director's inbox for 12 days before it was signed. This is unacceptable when livelihoods are at stake. There's been a general lack of urgency and empathy to remedy my situation when I called various offices in the district. This also leads me to wonder how parents are being treated when they reach out to this district. The beginning of this school year in sped has been uniquely extremely disorganized unlike any other year. And I've been working here, this is my sixth year. I urge you to reach out and help the special education department get itself organized so that your employees can help themselves so that we, the workers, in turn, can help serve our students and families. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Do y'all hear me? Okay. I just want to say happy birthday to my daughter. Today is one of y'all West Contra Constit's birthday today. That's why I'm not the in-person, otherwise I would have given this job. So I want to say thank you to the district staff for, you know, working with the parents, the ASAT executive committee and meeting with us and getting the school year off to a start where we're working together. We did hear some things in our meeting that the relationship with the BSU and how that was working with OASIS office would be changing. I would like for you guys to consider how you're gonna change that because our youth, youth that identify as Black and African American are publicized as being mischievous in our community. And I think the BSU was a very strong vessel that is built up in our district for our students. And I think our district should be responsible, have a piece of the responsibility for our youth's wellbeing and have something for them to social emotionally connect with in our district. So I would like for all the resources that we have for our students in our district to continue so they can have outlets and constructive things to do in our community. So that's all. I'm complete. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Able Community. Please unmute yourself and state your full name for the record. Please unmute yourself. That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. And thank you, everybody who made public comment. And Ms. Harris Gash, we are very sorry for your loss. I think I can speak for everybody here. Board, we are now going to move to our agenda review and adoption. Without objection, we will adopt the agenda. Okay, so adopted. We're gonna move now for the approval of the minutes from August 2nd, August 4th, and August 23rd. Were there any questions or concerns on the minutes? Okay, if not without objection, we will approve the minutes from August 2nd, 4th, and 23rd. So adopted. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to our consent calendar, consent items, excuse me. Are there any consent items anyone would like to pull? Okay, without objection, we will approve the consent items. So adopted. Thank you. Now we're gonna move to our superintendent report. Dr. Hurst, pass to you.
Thank you. Can we bring up the presentation? We have a couple of things that's happening on the superintendent's report. We're gonna celebrate first one of our high schools, middle college, high school. Then I'm gonna turn it over to CEO Johnson to talk about curriculum, who actually had the opportunity to step down from our seats and go to the board and then listen to a presentation and look at the curriculum. And then we'll kind of follow up with our director of communications. That's gonna give us a highlight and update on our campaign for attendance. Next slide. So we wanted to take this opportunity to just share on September 19th, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman issued a news release congratulating 33 California schools that have been chosen as 2023 National Blue Ribbon Schools. The National Blue Ribbon School Program was the brainchild of the second Secretary of Education, Terrell Bell, who served from 1981 to 1985, best known for commissioning the study of American education that resulted in a nation at risk. Bell created the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award in 1982. He wanted to bring public attention to the best schools in the United States and to facilitate communication and sharing of best practices within and among schools. Some of the criteria was, is exemplary high performing schools that have the state's highest high school graduation rates and the highest achieving students, the top 15% in English and mathematics, measured by state assessments. And also another criteria is exemplary achievement gap closing. So those schools have made the greatest advances, which is the top 15% of the schools in closing student groups, achievement gaps in English and mathematics over the past three to five years, measured by state assessments. So we wanted to just first pause and just honor and congratulate Principal Finney Prack and also the middle college, high school community. Thank you so much and congratulations. And next slide. So this time I'm gonna turn it over to CEO Johnson and she can give us direction.
Okay, good evening, Board President Gonzalez Hoi, trustees, Dr. Hurst, and community. We, I'm happy to have two of our educational services staff, John Eo Waki, who is our STEM coordinator, and Jennifer Instrom, who is our science coach. And they brought out our curriculum. We are showing and displaying today three curriculums. Our elementary TK5, which is TWIC Science, which we just recently adopted, and middle grades Amplify Science, which was adopted in 2020, and then our high school science programs that were adopted in 2021. So we invite you to come down and take a view. We have a mini presentation, should take about five minutes, but we wanted you to see our offerings.
Thank you. Why don't we do the presentation first, if that's okay, and then we'll come down? Or is the presentation over there? Oh, okay. Okay, board, we're gonna walk to the back where we're gonna get to see the curriculum in person. Anyone in the public who's present, you're welcome to join us and physically look at the curriculum and then we'll come back and ask questions in public. We're gonna take about five to eight minutes. Okay? Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much, everybody, for engaging in that. We will learn from today and continue to incorporate what we hear. So if anyone has any feedback on this, we're going to be doing this every month for a while since we have so many curriculum. So thank you so much to the curriculum team for bringing this and obviously your support. And now we're going to pass it for a quick presentation on what we just heard. And here at Dejean, so for the people on Zoom can hear, and we'll continue on this reporting report.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm John Ewaki. I'm the coordinator of science and engineering. We're very fortunate in the science department because almost all of our curriculum is new and modern and aligned to standards. And that's fantastic. Like, that's been a barrier for many, many years. And slowly but surely, those barriers have been removed. We brought samples today of elementary science. And when I say elementary, that means grades TK to five. I also brought samples from Amplify Science, which are a middle school. And when we say middle school, we mean grades six through eight. And then for high school, we brought a sample from physics, biology, and chemistry as well. For each of these programs, teachers are provided, teachers and students are provided both printed materials and digital components. So in particular, TWIG science has a digital component, full platform. Students can use it. You can push assignments out on it. You can grade on it. All of those things, if teachers need background information, that's available. The videos are embedded. They can download slideshow, slideshows, use them, edit them, add to them however they want. All of those things are also available in print. So teacher edition is print. Student workbook is print, or they can enter their answers and thoughts online. There are, there's a real focus on a couple of things I want to highlight. There's a focus on literacy. Every unit, every module comes with leveled readers. So students are able to read a book about what they're learning about at their level with the same content. In each of those books, chapter two focuses on a STEM career, which I love. Again, every module, every unit, chapter two is about a career in STEM. They also come with a set of books, a set of classroom grade level books that are about the subject. If it's whatever earthquakes or frogs, then there's a ton of books about earthquakes and frogs that students can read. Teachers can read to students, all of those things. There's a real focus on literacy here that I love as well. Very similarly, in middle school, Amplify Science is very, very digital and modern. But again, every unit is focused on a career. So in one unit, you're a physician trying to figure out what's wrong with this little girl. In another unit, you are a rocket scientist. In another unit, you are a tsunami warning system engineer. You're always focused on a career. You take that position of a career. Same thing, there are both print and digital materials available for teachers. They can push things out through Google Classroom. They can use the platform itself. They have the option of printed student workbooks, but it's not necessary. Both of these programs are also different because they don't come with a big textbook. Kids aren't carrying around a textbook anymore. It's very modular and very digital, which is great, but it does have the option of a consumable workbook. Same thing for TWIG, same thing for Amplify. Happy to take any other questions. That's most of what we said over there.
Thank you so much. Or the same, you have any questions specifically about this? Yes, just directly.
I do. So thank you very much for the presentation. And the first thing is something that you said in the back that caught my eye, which is we have approved curriculum for TWIG. And only three, grades three to five has shown up, and yet you're waiting for an authorization for the rest of the curriculum. Can you explain that to me, since the board authorized the funds to purchase the curriculum?
I don't have those details. I'm sorry.
And next is, I've been kicking myself since your last presentation about a question that I didn't ask. So I'm glad you're here. Can you explain how these different curriculums treat climate change?
I can't speak in detail about them. However, in the NGSS, in the standards that these books are based on, that we believe they cover well, there is a whole section about human impact and climate change. So that is embedded in the standards at every grade level. And I would, and I would point you toward the standards that I believe that these programs follow. So I would say like, they are, it's present because it's present in the state standards. Do you want more detail than that?
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Clerk Smith-Holz.
So I have two questions. One, when do we expect the books to be in teachers' hands? What's the timeline for that? The three through five?
I'm not clear on that. I believe it's less than 10 sites that have been delivered currently. I know the warehouse is overwhelmed, like adoptions are a big deal in terms of space, science adoptions, obviously more because of all the activities, kids as well. I know that they are working on it. And I know that we're all eager. I'm eager and the teachers are eager to. I would be reluctant to give a, an ETA, but soon.
And then my second question is, what are we providing for teachers? Or what are we doing for teachers in the interim for TK through two?
Thank you. Yeah, we were anticipating a possible delay. And so we did re-up our contract with Mystery Science that we've been using for the last few years. And, and to be honest, like, we love Mystery Science. It's fantastic. And we still have licenses for that.
Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith-Holz. Thank you so much for the presentation. Ms. Moses, question for you, following up what Justine Reckler was asking. What did we then approve for the science curriculum adoption? Do we only approve three to six? And not K through two, or could you clarify, please?
Absolutely. So upon initial ordering in July, we were only able to fund grades three through five. We were able to identify additional lottery funds that came in after that initial order in order to fund the purchase of this program for TK to two. So we are now fully funded for a full program. However, I would have to check and see where we are in the process of completing those contracts, receiving those goods, and delivering those to sites.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Hurst, we can continue with your report. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here and for the presentation.
Thank you again, Ms. Neely Johnson. We'll turn it over to our director of communications, Ms. Sanders.
Good evening, President Gonzalez-Hoy and Board Trustees. And thank you so much for this opportunity to share an update on our Why We Show Up campaign. This is our Attendance Awareness Month campaign for the month of September. While I am presenting this tonight, I want to make sure it's really clear how much of a team effort this campaign has been. Our family recruitment and retention team, our communications team, our maintenance and operations team, our business services team, our food services department, the list goes on and on and on, our safety team. I know I am forgetting, folks, but truly, this has been an incredible team effort. And we're really sparking a lot of enthusiasm. Our information technology team, see, there we go. There are so many who have really joined in. And we hope that our students feel that energy as we continue to execute this campaign. Next slide. So the theme of our community-wide campaign for Attendance Awareness Month is Why We Show Up, Attend Today, Achieve Tomorrow. We did introduce this theme before. We want to go a little bit deeper today and share what we're continuing to do. As we ask our students and our families to start the year with consistent attendance, we want them to know that we show up with them and we show up for them. So partnership is core to the ethic of this campaign and all of our tactics. And we hope that shines through as we walk through an updated presentation of our tactics. So why are we showing up in support of attendance? Why are we making sure that this campaign is so highlighted? That is because we know that consistent attendance is the foundation of our students' growth, wellness, and academic success. And we know that research shows that chronic absenteeism swiftly and significantly impacts the likelihood of students graduating from high school. So we want to make sure that in this month of September, we are jumping in and we are wrapping resources around our students and our families and making sure that we're supporting consistent attendance at the start of the year. Next slide. Our campaign, so a little bit of an update on our tactics. We have district-wide social media and what we'd consider out-of-home tactics. So that means any advertising tactic that we're using that is not necessarily living in someone's phone and someone's computer. We really wanted to think creatively about how to find our students and our families where they are. And so that is where we want to thank the partnership of all of our teams who have vehicles in West Contra Costa Unified, who allowed us to wrap their vehicles with quotes from our students and staff about why we show up and promote the campaign. That will run through October. We also launched school site resources for participating in the campaign, and this included a media toolkit for administrators to use with staff and families, and also door signs for administrators. So the door signs that you have a copy of as Portressies this evening are the same ones that administrators got. You are welcome to use them, post them where you'd like. If you'd like to take a selfie and join us on social media, we'd love that as well. We also created, our sites are creating attendance recognitions and celebrations to make sure that students are really experiencing this firsthand. We have a landing page on our website where we're sharing resources that support consistent attendance. Because we want to make sure that our students and families know that when attendance is a struggle, it's often a struggle for real reasons and real reasons that need real resources. So we're making sure that we meet those needs with clear resources and supports. And we will continue to collect Why We Show Up testimonials. And we've collected them from our community school directors. I'll tell you a little bit about how we've done that in just a moment, and how you can contribute testimonials as well. And then we also have an interactive social media competition to give a pizza party to the school that generates the most Why We Show Up testimonials and participation. And we will have recognition of students who are achieving 90% or higher consistent attendance. Next slide. All right. So these are the exciting ways for you to participate with us. We are launching social media posts. We've got one up already, another will be going up tonight, and you'll see these consistently as we continue. Any hashtag Why We Show Up posts, we invite our community to comment on that post using the Why We Show Up hashtag. Share your reason why you show up in support of West Contra Costa Unified students and tag a WCCUSD school. That will give a point to that WCCUSD school. The school with the most points at the end of the month of September will get a pizza party. You do not have to be a currently enrolled family or student or staff member at a school in order to give points. Any of us can give points to any of the schools that we want to. So this is a challenge and an opportunity for us to show our schools a whole lot of love and make sure that we get our students a pizza party and show them some appreciation. You can also contribute a video testimonial. There is a link here that'll also make sure that the board gets in a follow-up email. And that we've been sharing with staff as well, and we will be sharing with our community partners. That is a way to just answer the question of why you show up and instantly send our communications team a video testimonial that we can use on social media. You can also send us just audio and text through that, but we really appreciate those videos. They're really compelling. And then that third way to participate is to share resources using the Why We Show Up Attendance Resources landing page. That's also linked in there. It will be linked in our link tree on our social media, and I'll also make sure that you have a direct link as well. And our final slide. Thank you so much. So at the school site level, our strategies are really robust. Our apologies for the tiny font here, but we've got a lot going on at our school sites to support Attendance Awareness Month. Our schools are hosting school-wide attendance recognition activities, which include celebration ceremonies, attendance awareness assemblies, weekly attendance shout-outs using some of those materials from the toolkit that the family recruitment and retention team provided to our site administrators, and also those attendance incentives that we talked about in terms of having 90% or higher attendance does enter our students into a raffle. We are also doing targeted outreach to our Black student population. So there's a specific data poll from A2A, which is our attendance tracking system that will be provided to sites. Our school community outreach workers are receiving a script that will support in connection to Black families who have experienced chronic absenteeism. And they'll do a check-in regarding the start of the year, answer any questions or concerns, and find out anything about any supports that may be needed to support attendance. Because again, we know when there is a real issue of chronic attendance, there are real reasons that need real resources. We will continue that community messaging. So schools are using these resources on their social media. There are resources for a principal message to families and parents who are messaging. And there's also resources for the Start With Hello campaign that builds a culture of inclusivity and empathy. And that concludes our update. Thank you very much for the time.
That concludes our presentation.
Sorry, Dr. Hurst. Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson, Dr. Hurst. Or are there any questions from anyone? Clerk Smith-Holz.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think that it's great that we have a campaign that says why we show up. But do we have anything that talks about how we show up? And I say that because my kid always got the attendance awards because I yelled at her to get out of the house. Let's go. So how does she show up to school? The first 20 minutes, she's stressed out, right? So how do we provide resources for our parents to help with how do we show up to school?
That's a fantastic question, and thank you again for lifting up the need for resources. We have launched our Attendance Awareness Landing page. I'll make sure that you've got a direct link to it. If you have any feedback on the resources that we're currently offering, or if there's anything that we're missing, please, please let us know.
Thank you, President Gonzalez-Hoy. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith-Holz. Trustee Reckler?
Thank you for the presentation. Do we know what attendance is tracking now? And do we know, have we seen any upticks? I know this is brand new.
That is also a fantastic question. We will be bringing back an update on this campaign as we kind of exit this campaign and start our October campaign for Cyber Safety Month. We'll talk about the impact that this campaign had and share some of the metrics that we tracked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much for all the reports. We're now going to move to item E1, which is a single plan for student achievement. Ms. Neely Johnson, I believe this is your item.
Yes, good evening again. Could we bring up the presentation? Thank you. Okay, so tonight, we're going to be reviewing the, this is our second round of SPSAs that we're bringing for approval. And this is our second and last round. So I'm very happy about that. We have nine schools that we'll be approving to this evening. Next slide. So the SIPSA, which is known as the School Plan for Student Achievement, this is the plan that represents our school's continuous improvement for student achievement. We review data, we develop actions, and then those actions and data are monitored throughout the year. Next slide. This is a compliance issue. We have funds that are attached to the strategies that we use on a yearly basis. And so we look to make sure that we're using best practices, and we're also making sure that we're using categorical and federal funds in the way that they should be used. Next slide. So we also make sure that our SPSAs are aligned with our district's vision and goals in addition to our LCAP goes and metrics. Next slide. So our goals for all of these areas are achieving students, thriving employees, and caring schools. And so strategies are created in the plans that address these areas. Next slide. So best practices for our SPSA work, we, like I said earlier, we reviewed data to determine what worked well and what didn't work. The SPSA is a fluid document. And so if we try a strategy and we don't see the progress we're making, we may pivot from that strategy and try a different strategy. We identified needs for the upcoming year. We look at our metrics to measure success. Some of the metrics can be local or state. Our local measures. Our local measures that we'll be using this year is I Ready for K8 and then STAR for 912. We develop goals to address the different student groups' needs and we design those action steps and monitor those throughout the year. Next slide. So hopefully you'll have an opportunity to delve into some of the SPSAs for the areas that you represent. But the overview is that they start with a purpose and a description, and that shows the school-wide programs and the theory of action. And then there's different components. So we make sure that our SPSAs are written to have equal access and stakeholder involvement. And when we talk about stakeholder involvement, we're talking about our school site teams, our ELACs and our APACs. Next slide. This is an example of what a page looks like in the SPSA. We have our actions to support the goal, the timelines, the subgroups, if those are targeted, who's responsible, and then descriptions and types of the funding. As I said, the SPSA represents a multitude of funding, LCAP and Title I and other funding that a school site may have. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, the SSC needs to review and learn about the progress of the plan. And they also have to vote. And so for plans to be compliant, that this has to happen on a regular basis. The SSCs have to be comprised of the groups represented in this, in here. And then also they look at budget and they participate in the monitoring. Next slide. Our ELAC is also another group that should review what's happening in the SPSA. And we have ELACs at our schools through grade kindergarten through 12. And ELACs are formed when there are 21 or more English learners. Next slide. We also have APACs. And this year, we had many schools that had APACs. And we are working this year to make sure that all schools have APACs. So next year, when we're bringing plans, our goal is to have all of our APACs in place and that they have participated in the same type of process as SSC and ELAC. Next slide. So that concludes our presentation. And I just will go back here to let you know, I am, this evening I'm asking for approval for the following nine school sites that are left. For elementary, Coronado, Dover, Highland, and Madera. For our K8 schools, Stewart. And for our high schools, El Cerrito, Kennedy, Pinot Valley, and Vista High.
Thank you, Ms. Neely Johnson. Board, does anyone have any questions? Trustee Reckler?
Sure, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. As was asked last time, are there any big takeaways or discoveries or things that were apparent from this batch? And what, you know, what would be processed from here?
So I'm coming into new this year. You know, I have had an opportunity to look at most of the SPSAs. And I think people have really worked hard to look at the strategies and the goals that they chose and making sure that they match the funding sources. One of the things that I would say that we want to continue to do is to engage our parent communities. And because many of the plans were complete, but sometimes our votes weren't compliant. And so making sure that we engage our SSCs, our ELACs, and like I said, also our APACs. Because that was one of the goals that we wanted to have for this year. We did make it, but we're moving to have it for next year.
And then how? Is there a role or does somebody provide feedback on some of the projected increases or goals that schools want to achieve?
So many times we look at, I say a variety of data, right? So we have our state-level data. You heard a little bit about that last month. But also our local assessments. I feel like that data is more real-time. And we do it more often, at least three times during the year. In terms of just feedback, I think that we do have opportunities to provide sites feedback through the SSC for sure is one and our ELAC and our APACs. But also to, I would say possibly if you're asking as a trustee, you know, maybe that's a conversation to have with the site administrator. I was a site administrator here and oftentimes our board members would ask what we were doing. And I use that opportunity to share the different strategies that we're using.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of comments at the end. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. Clerk Smithfolds, before we move to you, I forgot to ask for a public comment. Is that okay? Do we have any public comment on this item?
Oh, yes, we have one public comment.
Okay.
Salon Harrison, please unmute yourself.
Could you please put the clock up as well?
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and thank you for knowing that this works in partnership with parents. That's what I want to say. Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you. You didn't even need the clock. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Do we have any public, oh, thank you. Clerk Smithfolds, we can move to you for questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. I do have one question. On slide 10 and 11, we say kindergarten. Can we change that to TK through?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. The second question is, and I don't know, honestly, just I can't remember. Does virtual school have a separate than Vista Virtual or Vista Land, or are they the same SPSA?
Well, Vista Land is a different program than Virtual, but the principle is the same. And so in terms of the strategies that they use, it may be different because of the uniqueness of that program, but they are going through the exact same process. But they are under the same CDS quote. So I do want to say that in terms of when we're looking at, you know, the different programs that are happening. I'm happy that you did ask that question because it is something that I'm learning more about, our Virtual Academy. And Principal McCormick would be willing to come and share kind of some updates.
Thank you. And my final question is, who is the most optimal person on a site to lead SSE? Would that be a principal or a member of the SSE who is not a principal?
So I would say that I think the principal in their role is the leader. But in terms of who should be the leader of the SSC, to me, it could be a teacher, it could be a parent. You know, it could even be a community member. I would say that it should not be a principal because that is, the principal is already responsible for the instructional program and the site. And so it's also an opportunity to engage and have different perspectives. And so I was never in charge of the SSC. I always had a teacher or a parent.
Thank you so much. I'm complete. I just have comments.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more hands. So would anyone like to make a motion? Trustee Reckler?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move. Oh, okay. I'll just move the single plans for student achievement. The rest that was not approved, 2023 to 2024 fiscal year.
Smithfolds, seconds.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to comments. We'll start with Clerk Smithfolds and then we'll move over to Trustee Reckler. I'm going to put two minutes on the clock, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Clerk Smithfolds.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Once again, I'm very happy that these are coming to the board earlier than they've come since I've been on the board for years. So I think that that's really, really good. I think that the intentionality about making sure that ELAC is represented, making sure that APAC is represented, I think is absolutely wonderful. I agree with Cao Johnson. I don't think administrators should be leading the SSE. I think that it should be a skill-building opportunity for community members and a skill-building opportunity for admin that don't have that, or a skill-building opportunity for people other than admin. Admin have a lot of understanding about our budget and about how we allocate funds and about how we spend those funds. I think SSE is a prime opportunity to give that learning out to others. And admin have a lot on their plate. They don't need one more thing to do. So I think it would be, it will behoove us if we encourage our sites to look for members in the community and look for members of the SSE that can lead those monthly or bi-monthly meetings. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smithfolds. Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I want to thank the SSCs for their work. And I want to thank schools for their brutal honesty because if you read these, they're telling us things that are deep and complex and they need help. And, you know, as I said before, I always look for what the school can do and then I look for what the central office can do. And once again, bilingual aids is called out again. So I'm really looking for some action on how that position can get beefed up at school sites. That's not anything that they can do. That's a recruiting process that is held by the district central office function. The other thing that I spoke again, and I really encourage looking at it, is having different versions of this. Overall, I think this document should be cut back because I really want to see administrators out there doing the work rather than filling out an 80-page document. And if you have 45, 50, or $60,000 to spend, it's just a lot of cutting and pasting because you don't have any money. You can't really affect it. You know, I mean, it's just like, where are we asking people to spend their time? And so perhaps there's a smaller version or slimmed-down versions if you have fewer dollars. And then finally, I want to talk about some of the numbers that I saw in here. And there are some wild projections in here. I mean, they're just, they're not going to hit them. And I'm fine with having a healthy projection, but you can go through this document and you can find multiple examples and you can just look at it and you just know that they're just not going to make a 20-point increase. They're just not. I mean, it's just, you know, so to encourage. And I don't want anybody to get discouraged. I mean, I don't want people putting down the number and then being like, you know, oh. You know, I mean, if they really think they can hit it, that's fine. But I prefer a reasonable, it's a little bit aggressive. You really think that you can hit it rather than some things that are really seem out of the ballpark. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. For my comments, I think that first of all, thank you for the presentation. And I want to thank all the principals and everybody involved in this because I, as someone who did it once a long time ago, I know how much time and effort goes into this document. I agree with what my colleague said. And next year for the presentation, one of the things that I would like to see is maybe a synopsis on the trends on what sites call out as needs. And I think that will guide us to also, when we go into budget presentations and when we go into, you know, our study sessions, as we know, like, okay, our elementary sites pointed out that what they need to move the needle is this, right? And this was the major trend. So I would like to see a trend on that. And then I would also love to just get like a very quick synopsis on what sites are calling their successes. I mean, we can read if we look at the SPSAs, but most people calling in tonight or seeing the tonight's presentation, they're not going to go and look at every single one, right? So I would love to also just get a slide on what they themselves see as their success, which might be different than what we as a district see as a success. So that was just two pieces of feedback for next year, but thank you so much. I know that transitioning to earlier has been a lot of work. So thank you, Ms. Neely Johnson, for you and your department and everybody else who has done this at the sites. Okay, we're going to move to the vote to approve the SPSAs. We will start now with trustee Cypressert.
Cypressert, yes.
Sorry, trustee Calip?
Calip, yes.
Clerk Smithfolds?
Smithfolds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yeah.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, unanimously. Thank you so much. Now we're going to move to action item E2, which is our approval of the unaudited actuals financial statement for the 2223 school year. Ms. Moses, I believe this is your item.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Board President Gonzalez-Hoy, Clerk Jamila Folds, trustee Reckler, trustee Christian, and trustee Phillips. I am proud to be before you tonight. So thankful for Dr. Hirst giving me this opportunity as your interim associate superintendent of business services to present to you tonight the 2223 unaudited actuals report. This report is required by Education Code 42100. It requires that each year this report be submitted to the County Office of Education by September 15th and presented to the Board of Education as well. Before I begin tonight's presentation, I'd like to start with some thank yous. I'd like to acknowledge our business services department who have been amazing, in particular with this closing and preparing this report. I'd like to thank Jeff Carter, Mary Kitchen, Terri Jones, Megan Falk, and especially our senior administrative assistant Veronica Vega. But I also need to extend thanks to Ryland School Business Consulting Services. Their consultant has been instrumental in supporting us in closing the books this year so that we can today share with you the audited actuals, unaudited actuals presentation where we will compare the estimated budget with the actual budget that we had at the close of year. I'd also like to send a special thanks to Shannon Norris, our dedicated consultant, Javetta Cleveland, our fiscal advisor, and also Michael Bishop, my FICMAT induction CBO coach. Next slide. Our agenda today, we're going to review the revenue components of our 2223 budget, the general revenue categories, our expenditure categories, contributions that have been made from the general fund. We'll review our general fund activity summary and the balance components of that fund. We'll also do a dive into the estimates to actuals comparison. That comparison is going to give you an idea of what was estimated for spending for 2223 and what was actually spent for 2223. We'll also share the activities and balances for all funds and give a little glimpse into next steps for budgeting. Next slide. We're going to start with funding factors. Today, we're going to primarily look at the general fund. And the general fund is our main operating budget. It's the fund in which we pay for all goods and services and materials to run our school sites and our departments. The factors that impact our funding are our average daily attendance. The way in which we get apportionments or allocations toward our budgets is through ADA. That is the enrollment in our schools times the rate of daily attendance. A rate of daily attendance is variant. And since COVID, we've experienced some significant declines in that rate of attendance, which has also impacted the amount of revenue that we're able to collect. Our last, since 2018-19, we've seen significant impacts, negative impacts to our average daily rate of attendance. This year's, I'm sorry, for 2223 budget, which we're examining today, it was funded on the ADA from the 2122 school year, which was calculated to be 25,856 students. And that's an average of that prior year plus the previous two prior years in order to arrive at that figure. That means that although we may have had more students due to attendance, those are the only students that were funded through ADA. Next slide. I'd like to review with you the unrestricted general fund revenues. The unrestricted general fund are the funds that we use to ensure that we can pay for our base needs and services for our students. This includes our teachers, this includes our materials, this includes everything that you basically need to run a school or a district. It must come out of this fund. Within this fund, we have unrestricted revenue sources. And if you look at the chart here, our biggest revenue source is LCFF. We had $352 million. We had three hundred and fifty two million dollars allocated to our district through L C F F. Although these, these are unrestricted funds that can be used for our general operating expenses, they are made up of two separate pots. The first pot is unrestricted general use. The second pot is L cap. L cap is reviewed as supplemental concentration money to be dedicated for um, addressing needs of extensive school communities and students. So those two pots combined is are the three hundred and fifty three million. Um, you'll also see um, a debit of twenty two million, which is the money that we have to give to our charter schools to cover their allocation of the A D A. It is money that we receive and give to them for their operations of their charter school sites. The other funds that we see reflected here include uh, lottery contributions to our, our fund. Um, we, this year we had a home to school transportation reimbursement. We have a mandated cost block grant. And I do want to explain at the bottom there, there's a line item for fair market value for our cash in county. That shows a negative one point eight million. That is simply a recognition of the interest rates related to the value of our cash balances. There is no harm to us financially, no harm to our financial position with this figure, but it must be reported during unaudited actuals. So we had a grand total of three hundred forty nine point six million dollars in our unrestricted general fund. Next slide. We also have a restricted general fund. The restricted monies are for specific uses only. These restricted funds can only be used for programs and services to students as indicated by the funding source. This is not money that we can allocate to our general purpose. The unrestricted, I'm sorry, the restricted fund does however, have some recurring funds that we can generally count on, for example, title one, title two, title three and title four. You'll see in this chart that we had a nine point seven million dollar contribution from those federal grants to support extra services and programs at our school sites. Um, I'll also point out that our federal and state special education funding is restricted as well, meaning those dollars can only go for special education needs and that contribution was thirty five point four million. We are fortunate to have several grants to support our recovery from COVID. The liter, the learning recovery block grant is thirty eight point seven million. We had several funding sources through ESER and GEAR COVID nineteen grants and for the twenty one, twenty two, twenty three school year, uh, those grants totaled sixteen point five million. So if you look at the list of these restricted funding sources, this is revenue that came into our district at the rate of one hundred ninety seven point one million dollars for the use of these specialized programs and services and strategies. I like to explain that one line stirs on behalf. Stirs on behalf that shows that fourteen point eight million is not an allocation, but it must be reported. Stirs on behalf is the amount of money that was contributed by the state to the State Teacher Retirement Association or account. So I just wanted to point out that that is reported, but it was not revenue coming in. It was contributions for retirement. Next slide. So this side combines our unrestricted revenue along with our uh, restricted revenue. And so we see a combined total this year from L C F F sources and other revenue of three hundred forty seven, I'm sorry. The actual is three hundred forty nine point six million. But if you compare that to the initial column where it says estimated actual, our business services department last year estimated that that amount would be about three hundred forty seven point five million dollars. And so they were very close to the actual income um, collected. Um, and we actually came out in the positive. We were able to collect two point one million more dollars in revenue than our um, budget anticipated in its inception. Next slide. This is a pie graph and what the pie graph shows is the combined revenues and how the monies were expended. So if you notice that large blue block, uh, blue shaded area is our L C F F resources. That was three hundred and thirty million of the budget. The federal revenue, thirty seven million, other state revenue, a hundred and forty eight million and local revenue total thirty million. Next slide. This slide shows the financial changes between the estimated actuals and the unaudited actual expenditures. So if you notice, we have line items matched to object codes and three columns. The first column shows the unrestricted actual estimated budget for twenty two, twenty three. That middle column shows the actual expenditures for twenty two, twenty three and that final column is the variance. And if we look at the totality of those funds, we estimated total spending of three hundred forty three point five million. We actually journaled three hundred forty two point one million. So the variance for what was projected and what was spent is a difference of one point three million. You look at the bottom line where we are comparing the revenues minus the expenditures in the final balance. It was estimated at budget twenty two, twenty three that we would spend three million more, sorry, three point nine million more than we actually spent. So as a result of that, with our beginning balance, our net increase is three point five million dollars that we've come ahead between estimating what we would spend and what we actually spent at the end of our fiscal year. Next slide. So the unrestricted expenditures are listed on this pie graph. Um, what I'd like to highlight here is even with unrestricted, with our unrestricted funds, eighty one percent of those funding sources are used on salary and benefits. There is a um, line, line here for certificated staff salaries total, totaling a hundred and eleven point four million, classified staff thirty four point seven million. And the total for employee benefits was sixty seven point three million. The remaining amount of our budget covered books and supplies, some of our operating expenses, capital outlay and some small other alcohol expenses. When we, next slide. When we look at the restricted side, these are the dollars that are allocated only to special programs and specified services. Sixty nine percent of that restricted budget is spent on salaries and benefits. There is a little bit more room to um, to set aside money for additional programs, curriculum, services and strategies for students in those designated populations for these restricted funds. Next slide. So when we look at the combined expenditures, what we see is that seventy seven percent of our total budget for twenty two, twenty three school year was spent on salary and benefits. The remaining twenty three percent paid for other operating expenses, materials and supplies for our schools and departments. Next slide. I'd like to now talk about the contributions from our unrestricted general fund to other programs. I'd like to highlight here that um, our district takes care of all of its students and all of its programs. This is especially true in the case of special education. On a previous slide, you did see where there are state and federal allegations to meet the needs of our special education students. Well, that is not enough. And this, this past year, twenty two and twenty three, we did need to um, give a contribution to the special education fund in the amount of seventy two point nine million dollars. We also needed to allocate some contributions to our routine restricted maintenance account. However, this is a required three percent set aside from our expenditures in order to ensure that we have money to take care of routine maintenance for our sites and our departments. So the ten point three million dollar combined contribution is a required three percent. So total, we had a combination, a contribution of eighty three point one million from our general fund to those two sources. There was a minor adjustment of um uh, two hundred thousand. I'm not quite sure. Can't explain that very much, but I could look into it if you'd like. I did want to highlight that the special education contributions have increased over the years as need has increased. Uh, two hundred eighteen nineteen, forty nine point, forty nine million was contributed to the special education fund in nineteen, twenty, fifty million and twenty twenty, twenty and twenty one, forty nine million. So in those three years, we were fairly stable with approximately fifteen million being contributed to special ed. However, in twenty one, twenty two, our contribution jumped nine point three million to fifty eight point five million contribution to special ed. And this past fiscal year, twenty two, twenty three, it jumped further fourteen point three million to the allocated seventy two point nine contribution to that um, program. Next slide. So this slide demonstrates the combined total of our funds restricted and unrestricted revenues and expenditures. So if you look at the initial column, it shows the unrestricted unaudited actuals. The center column shows the restricted actuals. And the third column shows the combined total. So that gray bar is our profit line. It does show that the net increase to unrestricted funds was seven point four million. If you think back to a few slides previously, it was estimated by our previous C B O that we would have approximately three point nine million on that gray line. We actually were able to increase that due to um spending that was planned for but did not happen. So there is seven point four million as a result. Unrestricted uh, due to our one-time monies and due to um, some of the grants that we're recording here, but they haven't actually been spent down. That gray line is a sixty five million dollar um credit to our restricted funds. For a total combined profit line of seventy five point, so I'm sorry, seventy two point five million. Uh, this is good news for the district as we did not overspend. We did come in under our projections. And so we will, we are happy about that. So currently our ending fund balance uh, with what was um, are reluctant to call it savings, but the money that was unspent for different reasons. Uh, the net is one hundred twenty six point two million as an ending fund balance, which will be assumed for cost and services this year. I want to point out that of that amount, ninety seven point seven are restricted funds that cannot be used for our general operating costs. Next slide. So here are the components of our ending fund balance. Um, they have a rev, a small amount of revolving cash. The stores includes uh, goods and goods that we have stored that we are able to um, cost as assets. We also have uh, categorical or legally restricted funds available of ninety seven point seven million. We have our reserve fund for economic uncertainties at fourteen point two million. We have our unassigned reserves, which is the amount of money that will be able to reallocate as thirteen point nine million. And our total ending fund balance there matches the one hundred twenty six point two million dollars. Next slide. So when we look at just the simple numbers of what was estimated to be spent in the twenty two, twenty three school year, what was actually spent in the twenty two, twenty three school year, the variance is a positive three point four nine four million dollars in our unrestricted revenue. Next slide. When we then look at the restricted side of the house. For our estimated restricted usage of our funds, we estimated two hundred nine million. We came in far under that. And what we have as a result of our actual budget for restricted funds is sixty five million and that nets us thirteen point nine million from what we estimated to where we actually um, ended our end of fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Next slide. This is just another slide that shows um, how those revenues and expenditures work together and what that net uh, increase is. Next slide. This slide gives you a summary. In addition to our general fund, we have other funds uh, that we also manage for our district, our students and their services. This is a list of those funds and their beginning balance in June of twenty twenty two. Their revenues and expenditures for this fiscal year of twenty twenty, twenty two, twenty three, and then their ending balance. So that gives you an idea, fund by fund of where um, funds started and what they spent and where they ended, ended up at the end of the fiscal year. So if we look at the bottom line of this, the balance of all funds, including general fund is five hundred eighty nine point seven million as our ending balance. Um, many of those funds have money earmarked for bond projects, uh, renovations and some of them are set aside monies for um, specialized services. Next slide. Our next steps. So now that we have closed the books and we do understand what was expected to be spent for twenty two, twenty three, what was actually spent for twenty two, twenty three, we are now going through the process of preparing our first interim. Through this process, we will take the monies that we have as the beginning fund balance for the school year. We will compare them to what was estimated in the multi-year projection and we'll see what shifts we can make in order to uh, utilize the, the um, the revenue that went unspent in the previous year. The district's external auditors, Christie White, are in the process of auditing our books right now. They will give us an opinion after they comb through these financials and this is the opinion we want to see. We'd like the auditors to give us a statement that reads, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities for each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the district as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. This opinion renders our um, usage of our funds in accordance with um, exactly what we've reported to you tonight. Currently, our district staff are providing the auditors with all of the necessary information so that they can complete this audit and verify the report that we've spent um, here, that we've presented to you here tonight. Um, and that concludes my presentation. I am complete.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moses, for your presentation. We're now gonna move to public comment before questions from the board.
Okay.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have Mark Mitchell.
Okay, could we please put up the clock?
Good evening, President Gonzalez, superintendent person, clerk uh, Smith Folds uh, and board and cabinet. We're so delighted Ms. Moses is in her new role and we really look forward to working uh, with her to provide excellent service to students and the staff that that serve them. I do want to point out one concerning fact that wasn't brought up in the uh, presentation tonight and that is the, I, I gave this uh, to Rosa to pass out to the board. The fact that the current cost of education expended for classrooms is not meeting the legal minimum required by state law here in West Contra Costa for last year. We're fifteen million dollars short in our investment in students. Um, we only uh, spent fifty one percent of total outgoing um, on students and classrooms and their legal minimum for a unified district is fifty five percent. So we look forward to working with Ms. Moses and her staff and all of you to correct that and provide at least the legal minimum that West Contra Costa students deserve.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for your comments. Well, we're now gonna move to questions. What we're gonna do is that we're gonna do three questions per board member. First, we're gonna do two rounds and then we're gonna move to comments from there. Um, who would like to go start on questions? Let's start with trustee Christian.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for the presentation with the layout of the land of our funds. And I just have, just basically one question right now is uh, are we doing much better or are we?
That is a great question. Well, the answer to that question is we are working really hard to ensure that we can give you an efficient answer to that question. Uh, we are, now that we've finished this process of understanding what has already been spent, we now need to do the process of evaluating uh, what was listed in the multi-year projections so that we can see if we are doing better. Uh, we are continuing to work with Ryland School Business Consultants and our support at the county and with FICMAT in order to verify what was reported in the multi-year projections. So I look forward to giving you a more detailed answer. I I I think a preliminary answer would be, I think so, but I don't want to give you an I think so. Um, but i- in the case that we are doing better, it it will likely just be slightly better.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Trustee Reckler.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, so I have this document on my, on my computer. I don't know what it is. WCC USD Financial Trends Budget versus Actual for a number of different years.
That came from Mr. Mitchell from UTR.
Oh, okay. Okay, so do do you have any, have you seen this? Do you have any comment on this?
I have not seen it, but I would love to see it.
Okay. Okay, so then I'll I'll give this this to you. Um, and my question on this is what is it? Is it correct? And then how does it roll into, you know, what we're discussing now? Okay, so I'll put that on the side.
Okay.
All right. The next question is uh, specifically page six. Uh, and I'm looking at restricted funds. Oh, I don't know if your number is the same as mine. I'm just looking at my printed booklet. So unrestricted funds, the district underspent twenty six point four million or seventeen percent less dollars, and this is restricted. So what were the causes of that? And um, how can we spend the dollars that we have on students?
So I don't have my booklet with me, but here is um, what I think is my best answer for that. We have been fortunate enough to benefit from lots of one-time funds. The one-time funds are given to us and placed in our budget, but they're meant to be spent over time. Some of our one-time funds will be expending um, by September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. I cannot tell you what percentage of that is uh, directly inside of that figure you gave me, but I do know that in terms of our restricted funds, the way in which they're spent depends upon the program that's developed. Sometimes it's a one-year program, sometimes it's a two-year program and so forth. However, when funds are are, um, when revenue is um, allocated to us, we put it in the budget, whether it's going to be spent in that year or not.
Okay. Okay. Next is Can you talk about the attendance step down from the state? So they gave us a um, kind of a gift and they have been averaging attendance for three years. I believe that this year coming up is the last year of that step down. And if so, do you have any indication of what happens next? Um, is it truly a step down or do we look like it's a cliff in attendance?
I think that question's going to best be answered once we finish really checking the figures and the allocations. The current budget that we're looking at twenty three, twenty four was calculated with figures from P two of this school year, and I can't really speak to what that, how that is averaging out and whether it helps us or not. I do know that we're in declining enrollment, um, and that we're really trying really hard to get those attendance numbers up that our attendance is really going to be the deciding factor on how much money we bring in. Um, but I will work with our consultants to get you a more direct answer on that question.
Okay, thank you. And then the real question is, is the, is the step down, is this the last year of the step down like I think, or is there one more after that? Um, finally, considering that we've had a change in chief business officer and department is thinly staffed, does the fiscal advisor recommend a more in-depth audit? Than what we have typically contracted for. It has been my experience in this district is that when we have a change in staff and the institutional knowledge disappears is when the district has run into the weeds.
Thank you for that question. I think that that will be a decision left up to the board. Um, our current audit should be wrapping up within the next month and we'll have those audit findings. I am um, open to whatever the board decides if you would like a deeper audit. Uh, but I'd like to also get you the results of the audit that's underway so that you can make that decision on how we will move forward.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to check in with the fiscal advisor on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the presentation. It was clear, it was concise, and it was uh, well done. Even so, there are numbers, right? And there are lots of numbers and there's lots of um, verbiage that only a numbers person would understand. So my question, my first question is the amount that we pay out to charters, is that fixed or does that change year to year also?
That number depends on their ADA. So they get the money for the students that would normally be in our district that have enrolled in their charter so that ADA is transferred to those charter schools and um, that those funds are provided to those schools from our allocation because they're schools, students that would normally be with us are now with them, so they get the money for those students.
Okay, thank you for that. The second question I have is when I'm looking at page five and the numbers are the estimates versus what we actually did. In some of the line items, there are huge difference. Like, for example, there was an estimate to spend two thousand dollars, but you ended, or two thousand, right? But you ended up spending twenty five thousand. Is that thousand or million? I don't know. Is it million or thousand?
Which line item were you?
So uh, other outgoing.
Okay, yes.
Is that thousands or millions?
That is thousands.
Okay, so the estimate was to spend two thousand, they ended up spending twenty five thousand. That's a huge jump, right? So why? And then you'll see it again on the one that says transfers out. It was like, oh, we're going to spend nothing. And then it was forty thousand that was spent. Why the big jumps in those type of numbers?
So the transfer out, I can explain that one clearly. Um, that forty thousand dollars was transferred from the general fund to the adult education fund in order to pay for the classes for the seniors. So that was a decision made by the board to contribute that to adult ed. So that is what that, where that forty thousand dollars came from. The capital outgoing or the other outgoing, I would have to research to find out um, exactly. Something was not budgeted and then it was paid for. I I don't have, I didn't dig deep into that one, but I will and get an answer back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess my last question is how do we as a district and how do we as a board tighten up our numbers, right? And get closer to, this is what we, because we've been doing this a long time now, right? So something shouldn't be a surprise. This is what we estimated to be and this is what we know we're going to pay. My cable bill is always the same every month, right? Unless I buy a movie three or four times, but I know that, I know it's going to go up about eight dollars. How do we have that same type of concept when we're dealing with huge numbers? Because these are huge numbers. And there are many shifts in it, but what can we do as a board to aid the district into getting those numbers closer together so it's not this huge forty thousand dollar jump or twenty five thousand dollar jump or et cetera?
Uh, so I have some ideas about that. You know, I'm I'm really excited to learn from some great people in this field and I'm learning more and more each day. Um, but what I understand is that um, the estimates that are created, especially the estimated expenditures, were pretty spot on for an accountant's mind, right? However, what we did find is there are shifts throughout the year that we probably could predict better if we did a more frequent um, thorough review of our books. Uh, the only time in education that we actually do this deep dive thorough of our books is during the closing. During our interim, we do provide uh, updates on what's happening with the spending, but it's not to this level. So one of the things that Dr. Hurst and I are talking about is how do we more frequently monitor that budget? And not only within business services, but with other departments and school sites. Because some of the areas in which we did not spend money were monies that were allocated to sites. And so there are lots of different moving pieces when it comes to estimating what you need, estimating what you will have and making sure that those two match. But I do think by working together, collaborating with departments and with our labor partners that we can get to a closer um, estimate of where we need to be so that we're meeting the needs of our students and also continuing to have a healthy budget.
Thank you very much. President Gonzalez, I'm finished for this round if we do another. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Um, so Ms. Moses, thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of questions for you. In slide eight, you showed the estimates versus what actually was spent uh, for unrestricted. Why did we overspend in service and other expenditures by almost two million dollars?
I'm sorry, can you tell me the line item again?
Sorry, in slide eight.
I got it.
Um, in service and other expenditures, in comparison of how much we estimated versus how much we actually spent, it shows we overspent by almost two million. I was wondering if you could speak to the why it was, why we overspent by that much?
The five thousands are typically our contracts. Um, I'm not exa- I can't be absolutely sure, but I do know that we entered into higher contracts than we anticipated during our estimations due to staffing shortages and also um, due to I I'd want to say just the staffing shortages, but these are the contracts. So basically, we've spent nearly two more contracting out than we anticipated. And I do know, especially in that area of finding coverage for our classrooms and our students, that that was one of the areas in which we increased contracts.
Thank you. Uh, my second question uh, is related to slide twelve. Um, so we contributed seventy two million to special ed last year, which is, to your point, a huge jump from the previous years. Um, why did we have to make that jump? Um, such a large jump in in West Contra Costa?
You know, I can't answer that question right now, but it is something that um, we do need to drill down into. I I don't know the special education enrollment numbers or service requirements offhand. Um, but there is clearly a steep increase after COVID. Um, there were also additional funds. I I think, well, let me not make an assumption. When we have one-time monies, people want to spend them. I don't know how much that plays in, but if you notice, the jump happened when the one-time money started pouring in. That is one thing I'm really going to look into. I do know that our special education department is responsible with how they they use their resources and are ensuring that they can provide quality services for students. But they're also experienced in severe short sta- shortages with staff. Um, so I'm not sure if this jump is due to meeting a staffing need or due to an increase in student need. I would need to sit with our SULPA and the special education team and really dig into their books to see those differences over the last five years.
Thank you. Uh, and my last question is related. Um, why are we not utilizing the restricted side of the general fund for special ed issu- issues? Uh, couldn't we have, sorry, maybe I'm asking two and one, but couldn't we have used restricted funds for maybe some of the special ed uh, uh, needed supports instead of unrestricted general fund?
Well, I'll certainly check into the allowable and unallowable expenses, but everything that I know about um, the restricted funds is that they are to be above and beyond the base expectation of how we provide services to students. When it comes to um, implementing the IEP of a special education student, those needs become base because we're required by law to provide them. So I'm not sure that we can use Title I funds for student services. I'm sure that there are some, in some ways where we could probably use some funds to enhance services. But I'd have to do a comparison of what are our base costs and and what are we paying for above and beyond our base for special ed.
Thank you. Um, trustee Phillips, one will go to you.
My first question piggybacks off of President Gonzalez's question. The context of the question is that special education mandates are not funded or fully funded. So what you just said is we're required to provide these services and their base services. What is our requirement to provide services that are not actually funded? Like legally, what is our requirement to provide a service that's not funded?
I think this is probably better going to be answered by our SULPA director, but um, what I understand is that once a student has been designated a special needs student, whatever you write in their IEP, we are legally mandated to provide. So I think that that question relates more to what's in the IEPs. So that drives the services. Now, those aren't the only services that special education pays for. For example, um, special education funds are learning centers that isn't tied to an IEP all the time, only when it's RSP services. Um, but there's also uh, through our MTSS model, special education teachers providing intervention services as well. So those I don't believe are required, but they're a part of our program and they're charged to that raise, to the special education resource. So I think we go back to, we need to do a deep dive of what is that base and what is above and beyond that base. And the base does include IEP services.
Uh, Dr. Hurst, um, the question that I'm asking, and thank you, Ms. Moses, and the question that I'm asking, um, maybe it is for the SULPA director, but maybe it's for an attorney. Because I understand that you do what's in the IEP, but what I'm asking is, what if what's in the IEP is not funded? Which is a very specific question, right? And I get that we're doing it, but what are your legal obligations if it's not funded?
Go ahead, Ms. Nene Johnson.
So if it's in the IEP and the team agrees that this is a service that we're going to provide, we are mandated, it's a federal mandate to provide it based on IDEA. So um, I think the answer that Ms. Moses gave in terms of how we, you know, utilize our learning centers um, to provide multi-tiered system of support, so we're not over identifying students for special ed and really making sure we're providing those interventions and working together. I think we do that well in our district and we're doing it better. But um, if it is in the IEP and it is a service and the team agrees and the team is not just the parent, the team consists of I'm an administrator, a case manager, oftentimes a psychologist, um, a speech pathologist. It's a whole team of people who have um, recommended a service based on assessment.
So there's a law that says, or a regulation somewhere that says even if what's decided, and I know it wouldn't say it like this, but the gist, even if what's decided is not funded, a district is required to pull from their general fund to supplement it. And if that law does exist, can someone, our regulation, can someone point the board to that?
I think the bigger question, and this is, I feel like this is where we have to do a level of advocacy and we do advocate every year through SULPA, but we're not fully funded to support the services that our students require. And we have not been fully funded since IDEA was made. And we have not been fully funded since IDEA was made law. And so um, our state and of course now our school districts are always trying to make up that cost. And I think sometimes we get focused on just, you know, the amount that the services cost, but we're, we've never been fully funded. And so I think that is the continued advocacy that needs to happen at the state level. And the federal level.
Are we doing comments?
Yeah, we're going to three minutes of comment.
Okay.
And we're going another round of questions in case you have more questions.
Okay, was that, I wasn't counting.
That was three, but if you want to go in your second round now, you're welcome to.
Okay, you're saying just keep going and do through, okay. My next question is, are we going to have to, in your opinion, make cuts?
Based upon the multi-year projection that was created by Dr. McIntyre, yes, cuts will be necessary.
When, and I know the answer is, that's up to the board. So I'm not necessarily asking you, right? So maybe it is a question to the board or the board president or who will be the next board president, I'm assuming. Um, but when are we going to start this process?
For looking at potential cuts, it'd be after first interim, which would be in December. Also because the contract committee is going to start meeting in October and they're going to finish their work. The timeline that we saw, Ms. Moses, was we're going to finish first week of December before the first interim, correct? So then that work also needs to happen before we can, the, before staff can bring us proposed cuts.
So in December is when the process
Could begin.
Could begin, and that's, what does the beginning of that process look like? Or can so, can you walk me through the start to something showing up for the board to look at what that is going to look like or what you think it's going to look like?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we'll have to get back to you uh, with a deeper plan. But uh, the idea would be that at first interim, because we'll know exactly how much we'll need to cut in the multi-years. That'll be our first time we're looking at really what the problem is. Then staff would have to bring us um, and work with labor in the early spring on what those look, cuts would look like. Um, also at the first interim, the plan is that we would approve the cuts for contracts from what the contract committee would propose to the rest of the board. So then it would also impact the overall multi-year for lack of better words, problem that we have.
Is there a target date? So like, for example, you know, like that March 15th date, I think we did it like on March 9th or something, right? Is there a target date to give us a little, that gives us a little more cushion? I'll just use that word.
Well, I think that we haven't discussed when it would come to the board, but from conversations with Ms. Moses and Dr. Hurst, um, the idea is that everybody will know the problem and the solution much earlier than that. So that we are not going through the same problem again. Um, now, much earlier than that, there's not much time, so we're really looking at January, February. But we'll have to get back to you on what really that good plan would look like because a lot of conversations need to happen with labor before it can become public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, we're, we're going to continue with questions. Does anyone else have questions for a second round? Clerk, uh, I'm sorry, uh, trustee Christian?
Yes. Yeah, the question I have, uh, will it be big cuts or small cuts?
Will there be big cuts or small cuts? Was that the question?
Yeah.
Well, I think I, we need to have a full budget presentation in order to find out how these unaudited actuals fit into the picture of what we're tasked with doing moving forward. I can't say how big or small the cut, the recommended cuts uh, need to be tonight. Um, but I am committed with Dr. Hurst, he and I working together to find out exactly how the budget story is uh, developing week by week.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds.
The president named some strategies about the journey to March. Cause it's a journey to March, right? Do you have anything to add to what the journey to March is going to look like? Whether that's other ways of increasing transparency with the community, increasing transparency with our labor partners, having conversations with our labor partners. Do you have anything to add to what that journey to March will look like? That's my first question.
Thank you for the question. Uh, Dr. Hurst and I are working closely together to look at timelines and uh, priorities for that. Transparency has been named as one of his top priorities through this process. Um, I think I'll let him speak to um, what the timeline may look like because we're still in the planning stages of working that out and I'm not sure what he could share tonight. But we're working closely together to ensure that there is a clear plan that's, that will be shared and followed.
Yeah, we don't have a, a timeline yet, so we're still working through that. So if you allow us to continue to plan and come back to the board.
Absolutely. And when you, when you do share that story to March, I would love to see all of the strategies that you've been implementing and all the ones that you will continue to implement on that road to March, which includes sharing out with the community, sharing out with our labor partners, um, the budget contract committee, the work that it's doing in a summarization type of form to be clear with everyone what that journey looks like. I'm sorry, that's a comment, not a question. I will save the rest for comments. I'm complete.
Thank you.
A lot. I do have one more question. My third question is, we saw a lot of, in the budget presentation, there was a lot of 2.1 billion savings here. There's a 3.4 million here, there's a 13.9 million here. With all of those, and savings may not be the right word, right? With all of that money that's in the black and not the red, do we have a specific total money that's in the black and not the red? Does that make sense or no? Am I conflating slides together?
Well, well, the specific total was in the combined revenue and expenditures, yes. The majority of the red was likely on the restricted side. Um, on the unrestricted side, it balanced better to the tune of about 3 million. But on the unrestricted side, I'm sorry, on the restricted categorical side, there were wide um, discrepancies in what was estimated and what was actually spent. And again, I think that's also those multi-year grants that are expiring um, that have been repurposed for the coming year.
Thank you very much. President Gonzalez, I just have comments. I'm complete.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Moses, my last question uh, is actually exactly what you were just discussing. Um, I wanted to know a little bit more of the why we saved so much in the restricted side uh, from slide 13. It says 65 million, which is obviously not a small piece of the pie. So could you talk a little bit more in detail of why we're putting so much into our ending fa- fund balance?
So allocations are made in different ways for different funding sources. I cannot give you the exact answer, but I can pull together information to share with the board to show where that number comes from. Uh, but here is what I understand. As the, as a revenue comes in, it has to be placed into the ledger. And the revenue that's coming in could be for a future expense. And if that revenue is for a future expense, it looks unspent in, in a, in an unaudited actual, when in reality, perhaps you got a $3 million grant and you're spending $500,000 a year over six years, but that grant fronted you that money in year one. Some grants will split their money over the six years, some will give you a lump sum upfront and expect you to stretch those funds to serve the program over multiple years. I need to really like dissect fund by fund where that's happening and then I can give you a more definitive answer.
Okay, thank you. Uh, board, we're now going to move to comments. Um, so if we could put up a three-minute timer on the screen, we'll start with trustee Phillips and we'll just make ourselves, make our way this way. Thank you, Ms. Moses. Welcome to sit down. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Trustee Phillips, you're welcome to. Oh, yes, thank you. Good job. Trustee Phillips, you're welcome to start.
Thank you uh, very much. So I want to start by saying, and I've said this before, um, I would like us to give ourselves, when I say ourselves, I'm not just talking about the board and staff. I'm talking about the community, talking about labor, I'm talking about everybody. I would like us to give ourselves as much time as possible to have the discussion around cuts. Um, people may not, at the end of the day, agree on everything, but I think when you give people the space and in this arena, I think space also, in this arena, I think space also includes time. I think when you give that to people, I think the discussion becomes easier. Um, it's a difficult discussion, it's a hard discussion, but I do think it becomes easier when people don't feel rushed, when people don't feel like they have to answer immediately, when people don't feel like they have to have a response immediately. I just think it's one of those things that you do better on when you um, give yourself more time. And I think i- it avoids people feeling like they have to go really hard. Um, because like their back is immediately against the wall. And that's whatever side, if there are sides that, you know, people find themselves on. So that's the first comment. The second comment I want to make is about uh, the sped budget. So the question that I was asking about the requirement is a very specific question. It doesn't mean that I don't think that the sped budget should be supplemented. I didn't say that and I don't want to imply that. But I think there's a very different thing between the board knowingly making a decision and the board being told year after year that it's required to do something, right? So if there are contributions that the board needs to make, that the district needs to make to shore up sped, I'm suspect that this board, and I know everybody on this board to different degrees, I suspect that the board would make a contribution. Um, but again, I think that the board should be able to do that knowingly and intelligently. And so, you know, if there is um, a, a contribution that's needed and it's not funded and the board does not literally have an obligation to do something that's not paid for, the board should know that. And then the board should make whatever decision that it wants, but it should not be just said that something has to be done. So if there is a regulation that says, even if it's not funded, I'd like to see it. I think the board should see it too, so it can make its decisions knowingly and intelligently, whatever they are.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, we'll go to you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I would like, I know the department is thinly staffed, I know people are, are new learning roles. Um, I do miss the narrative. And the narrative, I think, would answer a lot of questions that the board had here because it tells you exactly, you know, like why you came in short or what the origins were. So I do encourage the narrative to come back. Um, I do have concern over the 3 million unspent or sandbagged or, you know, like, I don't know what's going on in that unrestricted books and supplies category. But it's 3 million, it's also 28%, so that's not like a 10% slip, that's big. Um, and we're dying for $3 million. So, you know, just um, being thoughtful and accurate. There can be some padding, but you know, not, not to that level. And then, once again, I don't really know what to say about the restricted side of the budget. But, you know, it's underspent. These are, these are required funds that need to be spent in certain ways on kids. This is actually, it's really important. And so, you know, just some of the things in here, like books and supplies being underspent by almost $10 million. I mean, there's some things in here that are really, you know, I'm questioning and I think the narrative would have helped. Um, it might all be legit, but we don't know based on the information we have now. Um, once again, I want to come back to the audit. When the district has been in the most trouble is when we've changed chief business officers and we lose that institutional knowledge. So um, you know, I think the audit comes back in March. I'd actually like to see that come back earlier because we're going to be making decisions. And so um, you know, I think that, I really think that that's a point that, that needs to be explored. Um, if the fiscal advisor thinks we're okay, that's fine. But if there's hesitation, I think that we should come back and look at the contract to increase. And it's not because anybody did a bad job. It's not, it is not a, it's not a reflection on anybody's work. It's the fragility of, of what we have going on right now. And then I think I need some correction with this, but I also want to put this out there. I have this in my mind that the fiscal advisor like wants things pretty baked in December by the first interim because of that multi-year projection. I don't know if that's true, but we might want to do a check um, on that. And with that, thank you very much. Good job and I am complete.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk Smith Folds, we'll go to you.
Thank you so much. There's a couple of things that I want to speak to. One, great job. Two, you should be recognized for carrying a mop and broom because you're doing a lot of cleanup. You were doing a lot of cleanup in that department, you're doing a lot of cleanup with the books, you're doing a lot of cleanup with the numbers. So this isn't on you, right? So it's just, you're presenting what you've cleaned up and found. So for that, thank you for giving us a very transparent look at where we are. The second thing is, I want to say from the dais, sped kids are general ed kids. We can't say that enough. Sped kids are general ed kids. So we have to make sure that we are consciously and intentionally always working from that true narrative. Um, I would love to see at some point budget ambassadors under your facilitation because you make it very clear about what the numbers are and how to do the numbers so, or how we use the numbers. So I think that's great. Um, I would like us to address, how do we make sure that we are over what we're supposed to allocate for each child? That is a real eye-opener, that we need to make sure that if they are, if we're required to spend $500, that we're spending minimum 500, if not more than 500, on every child's 13 to 14-year experience in our district and even more if we have our transition students. The other thing that, Dr. Hurst, I would like to comment on is, every cent needs to be shared. If we spend a penny, we tell the people this will be spent the penny on. Every cent needs to be shared. Every question has to be answered. So when we create questions tonight, they need to come back with the answers because it needs to be shared out to the community once those answers are gotten. Um, for me, I think every meeting should be an update. We have talked about money at every meeting in some form, in some shape. That's just my personal opinion because I think that's part of the journey to March, is to have a conversation about money all the time. I think that our belts can't be tighter. We need to make sure that our belts are as tight as possible and we're not letting, we're not letting money sit anywhere. Everything is being spent or allocated to be spent or is in a place where it's supposed to be, because I don't think that we're in the position to not do that. I think that is another thing that helps with our journey towards March. The other thing is, if we're not working with our community and labor, we're not working. We have to do this journey together, lockstep together to march. Because if we don't and we show any division and any divide and conquer, the county will come in. And I don't like them. I don't, I said it, I don't like the county. So I want us to be in control of us. And for that to happen, we have to be together as a team. We have to be one-on-one or as one. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Um, so for my comments, first of all, Ms. Moses, thank you for your presentation. I'm so excited you're in the role. I've already been very impressed in our conversations. Um, a couple of things, I would like to follow up a little bit on a few things, actually a few things. One, the contribution to sped, I really want to get a deep understanding of why we've seen such an increase. Um, I almost feel, and I hate saying the word audit because of the work that comes behind it, but I almost want to see an audit of sped. Uh, because uh, it shouldn't be growing to the, well, I don't want to say shouldn't because I don't know that. Well, I don't want to say shouldn't because I don't know that the world, the sped world, that's not my expertise, but I am concerned how it's grown on in such a small amount of time. And that we can't name that that's going to staff, right? Um, that means that it's going to other things, right? Whether it's for IEP services or contracted services. Um, but that's a huge concern. I also want to learn more about why we can't pay for some of the sped services from the restricted. Um, because we are, I don't want to say the word swimming, but we do have a very healthy reserve in the restricted side. So if we can move it to the restricted side, then that would free up unrestricted money that we can use in the multi-year. Um, and the impact. Um, I also want to understand a little bit more of why we didn't spend sixty five millions in the restricted last year. Uh, I would like to get a little bit more understanding there, uh, and maybe that will help us also understand what we can move over to restricted from. From unrestricted that we're saving. Um, I also, I'm really excited to start the contracted work. I mean, we have a couple of our labor partners here. That's going to be critical to help us with the impact on the cuts on. Uh, staff and from the classroom, although from the work that we did, every contract does something, right? So we have to keep that in mind as we head into the work, but we have a lot to save. And a lot of work that we have to do. So thank you, Clerk Smith Folds for um leading that charge. And I think that charge is going to start in the next couple of weeks. Um, I do want us to, I know that's part of your vision, Ms. Moses, but I do want us to maybe do. A study session fairly soon on the multi-year projections, even before the first interim. Just so that we start on, we start, we, we understand the problem. Right now, I feel like I'm in limbo. Like I don't really know what's true. We only know what happened last year. And I can't trust it if I'm honest because of what we heard tonight. The numbers, we saved a lot in some areas and we overspent in others. So actually the multi-year impact is very different than what we know. So I actually don't know what the picture is two, three, four years out. So we need to know that, I think, before December, um, before the first interim. Um, and lastly, I know it's also part of your vision, Dr. Hurst, but we have to work with labor right away. We have to be transparent with community because if we do have to make a dollar worth of cuts in the spring. Um, which all science point that way, we have to be really transparent of where that comes from and the impact and maybe what we have saved. But thank you. Um, okay, everybody, we do, I, what I missed is that we do have to have a motion. And I should have done that before comments, so I apologize. Um, but would anyone have a motion? I'm sorry. Ms. Cleveland has her hand up.
Just quickly.
Oh, hi, Ms. Cleveland. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, the only comment I have is I think Ms. Uh, trustee Reckler asked about the three-year ADA averaging and when that ends. Um, the three-year ADA average continues forward. It's always going to be the current year and the two prior years. So it'll just like in twenty-three, twenty-four, it'll be the twenty-three, twenty-four year and the two prior years and twenty-four, twenty-five, it'll be that year and the two prior years. So that ADA averaging changes, but the actual process of that is not going to end at this point, at least not in the current state budget. So the three-year ADA averaging will continue forward and the years will just adjust as the, as the district goes forward. In terms of the restricted dollars and what wasn't spent, it was twenty-six point four million dollars that was under budget. That was, that was not spent, not sixty-five million. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that. So it was a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars estimated and there was a hundred and thirty-two million expended. And the difference is twenty-six point four million dollars. If you go back to, um, I think it's slide sixteen. Um, the other thing is, is that, yes, a deep dive needs to happen on the unaudited actuals to look at whether those savings are one-time savings. Or ongoing savings. So that's really critical. It could be one, if it's vacancy savings, that's one time. Um, so that will be something that the, the staff needs to do um going forward. In terms of the external audit. Uh, the external audit is in process. So the, the, in the spring, the auditors do the, what's called the interim work. They look at internal controls. They do some school site testing. They look at ADA and then they come back. Once the district officially closes the books, which. We now have unaudited actuals, the auditors return this fall, and I'm not sure what the dates are. To audit the financial statements, the unaudited financial statements that. Um, uh, the CBO, uh, Kim Moses has just presented to the board. So those will be audited. They have statistical sampling methodology. If something comes up that requires more time, more extensive testing, they'll let you know. Um, but if it's something that's outside of their regular external audit that the board and superintendent would. Like for the districts, the, the auditors to, to review, that's because, that becomes an agreed upon audit that's requested of the audit firm. To say specifically, we want you to look at these specific areas because we had some transition. Other than that, they'll do their, their audit as they were required to. Under the governmental auditing standards, they have to test a certain percentage of the transactions. And then they'll get back to us and let Kim know if there's any concerns that they see. Um, as they move forward this fall and that report will be presented to the board on or before. December fifteenth is when the auditors normally present the um final audit report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cleveland, for the um clarifications. Um, okay, I think trustee Phillips has a motion. Um, I know that this Ms. Cleveland probably created more questions for us, uh, but we've already had a lot. Um, so if it's okay, why don't we send those in? Uh, she also created questions for me, so. Let's, uh, let's, we'll, we'll send in if it's okay through Ms. Moses, uh, send their questions and then. Uh, maybe, um, if, if you could send those out once there's responses to the full board. I would appreciate that. Uh, go ahead, trustee Phillips.
I'm over that we approve the unedited actual financial statements for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Same.
Thank you. Okay, and we already did comments, so we're gonna move straight to the vote. Uh, and we'll start with trustee Cypress.
Cypress, yes.
Thank you, trustee Calip.
Calip, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, now we're gonna move to item, our first, our only discussion item, which is F one. And I think Mr. Freeze is your item. Sorry about that.
Yes, thank you. So good evening, President Zalsoy, board members and Superintendent Dr. Hurst. Uh, tonight, we're asking the board to receive the fiscal year. If you could bring up the presentation. There you go, slide two. You go to the next slide. There you go. So we're asking the board tonight to receive the twenty-two uh bond performance and financial audits. Um, I would like to say before I get started that our auditor, Christopher White, could not make it tonight for the meeting. Uh, we do have representative from Ida Bailey, uh, that's on if there's any questions that may come up. So the audit period is July one through June, uh, twenty twenty-two. The bond performance auditors were Ida Bailey and the financial auditor was Christie White. And I want to point out there were no findings or recommendations for either the bond performance or the financial audits. Uh, I do want to acknowledge that the audit was due on March thirty-first. The district was late in providing information to our auditors, which delayed the audit by thirty days or just about thirty days. It was received by the district on April twenty-seventh and sent to the CBOC on April twenty-eighth. We, our auditors had presented to the CBOC on May eighth. Uh, we did bring presentation to the board on June fourteenth, uh, but it was sent back because we were waiting questions from the. CBOC in the presentation. Uh, we did um provide responses to the CBOC on July. Tenth and August fourteenth. Um, and the presentation happened, as I said, on June fourteenth. Next slide, please. I just want to point out that there were a hundred and fourteen inquiries made by the CBOC. For which uh we had responded to those inquiries both on July tenth and August fourteenth for the follow-up. Um, the CBOC presented a review of the bond, financial and performance audits on August fourteenth. Uh, there were actually uh two motions moved forward by the CBOC, uh, one. Recommendation was moved forward, or I should say executive summary was moved forward by uh CBOC member Anton Young here. And there was a, a summary produced by Lorraine, uh, Lorraine Hughes, uh, the chair of the CBOC. Unfortunately, the document that was produced by Lorraine, uh, Lorraine was not included in the document by mistake and we can forward that to you for review. Um, the attachments are here with, with the questions and the responses as well as uh the summaries from the CBOC. Um, and so we'll take any questions on this tonight.
Sorry, Mr. Freeze.
Yes.
I stepped away for to go to the bathroom. Excuse me, are we on questions?
I was saying, so that was the end of my presentation. Uh, if there's questions, I'll take questions from the board.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, does anyone have any questions? Just your regular, we'll start with you.
Thank you. So once again, I think I heard this. I just want to hear it again. Were there any findings by the auditors?
There were no findings by the auditors.
And then were there, were there any, um, were there any things that needed to be corrected in the previous year? Uh, that were pointed out and were those corrected?
So there was a correction pointed out by the CBOC in the prior year. Um, our auditor said there was, uh, and then we believe we could ask Ida Bailey there on the line right now.
So it was for the performance audit, not the financial?
I believe the question was on the uh performance audit.
Okay.
And Hannah, are you there?
Yeah, I can answer that. Hi, my name is Hannah. I'm from Ida Bailey. I was the audit manager for the performance audit. Um, everybody can hear me well. So in twenty twenty-one, our performance audit report. Indicated the payroll um expenditure allocated to the bond. Um, didn't have a justification on how it was allocated. But that has been addressed and then actually, um, while we're performing the June thirty, twenty twenty-one performance audit. The um, the corrective action was already kind of in, in progress, but it wasn't completed. But as of June thirty, twenty twenty-two, performance audit kicked in. Um, that allocation problem with the payroll expenditure has been addressed and therefore there was um. The finding was removed and considered resolved.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm just having a little bit of trouble hearing you, but it's me. It's not you. Um, another question for you is. I often hear our CBOC say that we're uh, that we um. Have financial and performance are specifically performance audit. Uh, it's called the Walmart version or the bottom basement version. Um, is this true and what, what else would you recommend that a district do to enhance the performance of it?
So we perform the performance audit within the scope identified by the California. Um, the bond Prop thirty-nine requirements. Um, so if there is any like additional scope. That the district would like us to perform that can be added. Um, for example, we do perform an extensive audit, performance audit for Oakland School, Oakland Unified School District. Um, it's an extensive performance, um, audit. Actually goes way beyond the required um audit standards. So there is a possibility that we could perform something more in depth. Um, where we look at even internal controls or just the control of the project, but as of right now, our scope only um. Extends to the point that is required by, by law.
I think I just asked three, right? I'd love one more.
Go ahead. I was not counting, so you get it for my fault.
Wh- what, what in your mind would uh require a more in-depth uh, uh, audit?
I think it's really the district's preference. Um, it's really, uh, I, I mean. We, we performed the performance audit on a lot of California school district and then most likely because, um. Unless there is a, I guess, indication that the district really um has a concern for. Um, there is really not, it, it's not required by law for, to perform an extensive performance audit. However, it's really the district's preference. If the district wants us to perform something more than it is required, it's. There is a possibility to do so. So I, I really don't have a clear answer for that because. The, I think it really relies on the district's preference.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else? Clerk Smith Folds, go ahead.
Mr. Freeze, are we? On schedule to turn things in on time?
So, so yes, we're trying to do better this year and get our audits completed on time.
Thank you. That's it. Complete.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Freeze. Uh, we're gonna now move to comments. Um, does anyone have any comments? Okay, uh, thank you so much. Uh. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see your hand. Sorry, trustee Christian, go ahead. Yep, you're good. Okay, okay. Uh, well, this is discussion items, so we don't need to make any motions. So. We're gonna now move straight to comments from the board. Um, thank you for putting up the clock. We'll do three minutes tonight since we're doing so well on time. Does anyone like to start? Go ahead, trustee Phillips.
So, um. Wasp, or wasps. My wife was volunteering at the school and got stung by a wasp. My son was at the school and got stung by a wasp in his lip. The point that I'm trying to make is facilities, folks. Can my family stop being stung by wasps? And I think that if it happened to them, it's probably happened to some other kids and some other mothers and fathers. So for safety reasons, and I'm playing kinda not really, but for safety reasons, can we actually do something about the wasp? And um, right now I'm putting in a plug for the wasp battle, Linda. Um, but for the gophers and the wasps and all the other little critters that are harming children and families at the other schools. Can we see about them too? I do want to say thank you to everybody for the presentations. I want to say thank you for the financial presentations. Um, I want to say that I, I. Know that all of our students are important. I want to say that I know that all of our students uh deserve the best education. Um. I don't even want to say that we can provide. I just want to say that they deserve the best education. Um, and I know that we have to advocate. Um, I'm just, I was just talking about um, knowledge, that's all. Right? Um, and knowing what is what, what we do. And what it is, you know, those may not be the same thing, but it's knowing what is what. And that's all that I was really talking about. But I do want to thank everybody. Um, for the start of the school year. I know it's been going for a little bit. Um, but I think it has gotten off to a, a good start. Um, I want to say thank you to the board as well, uh, for a, a good meeting. Um, and I want to say thank you uh for the agendas because I do think. That the uh meetings have been um streamlined. Right? So, um, with that, I will not begin to ramble, but I hope everyone has a great night. Uh, and everyone gets home safely.
Thank you. Um, we'll move to trustee Reckler.
Thank you. First, I want to wish a Shana to Vat to all of our Jewish educators, staff, communities, students. Um, the Jewish community is now uh celebrating Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. Uh, which began uh on Friday night, I believe, and ends this following Monday night at sundown. Um, and so Happy New Year to everyone. And then second, I want to again talk about vaccines. That they are coming soon, like next week or like into early October, um, COVID and. Flu and then a, a new one, RSV. And if you've ever had RSV, it's horrible. Um. My whole family got sick. It was awful. Um, and so you should, should consider that um in your, uh, when you go. And so watch, I'm sure that it'll be everywhere, every sign, every billboard. Um, a lot of Kaiser members here, I'm sure you'll get blasted and um make an appointment to go in and keep yourself, your family and. Yourself, your family and community healthy. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for the presentation this evening. Everything was clear. And a lot of hard work goes into making it happen. And. With the journey that we all, we have a good team. I believe so. Dr. Hurst. Good team and. And I believe we're moving in the right direction. And so we have a lot of decisions to make down the road, but. We just got to, you know, chart out the course, you know, accordingly. And. And I like the fact of the. The student recruit. Let's see. I show up because, or why we show up. To push the momentum, to build a momentum of our students. To be at their school site. Encouraging our students to do, to become better and, and, and really, you know, achieve their goals. So. So this is really great. And. So we just got to continue to think outside the box on a lot of things and trying to. Figure out what things we can use to. Enhance our district. So. All right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Clerk Smithfolds?
Thank you so very much, President Gonzalez. Thank you again, colleagues, for a good meeting. We are at week six, so it's time to re. Reassess. It's a good time to readjust some of your norms that you see in your homes, some of the norms that are on school sites. I encourage everyone to please join your PTAs, your PTOs, your PSTAs, your SSCs, your APACs, your ELACs. Anything that's on your campus, join, participate, be a part of, because that's the way you shape the culture and the climate at the school. Please go out and get badged. We have badging parties that are happening, so please get your badge. That is a, once you get badged, you're badged. The second thing is when we're talking about attendance, I am. I want to make sure that we're not just creating celebrations for those that show up every day. But if you missed five days last month and you missed zero days this month, then that's a celebration too, because you are really. Taking your attendance into consideration. Also, I want to make sure that we're looking at the barriers. Some kids take a bus to school. They don't control the bus. They don't control if the bus picks them up late. They don't control some of those things. So making sure we're taking barriers away from those celebrations and we're celebrating everybody. The other thing is, I like the idea of how do we show up? How do we show up to school? Are our kids fed? Are they prepared? Are they enthusiastic? Do we have a level of unreasonable hospitality when they do walk into the room? And it's not, why are you late? But I'm happy you're here. All of that is culture shifting. I know at the school that, the elementary school that I volunteer at, it's, we say hello to everybody. They walk in the gate, hi, how you doing? Like your shoes, I like your hair, good job, glad you have your backpack. All of those levels of unreasonable hospitality wants kids to come back. I like the idea that we are still serving breakfast for everyone and there's even. Late chance breakfast or second chance breakfast that I think is amazing too. SSCs, please bring back the training for sites on SSE. That SSE training was done really, really well when it was here. So I did enjoy being, listening to the SSE training every year, and it was every year. It was. Someone from the district will come out and train on SSE. The other thing, I still, I love the budget knowledge that we're getting. I think we need to get more. Also want to say that we need to. Stand together in this district. It is Latinx and Hispanic Heritage Month. We are stronger together. So we share many of the same battles, many of the same worries, concerns and interests. We need to stand together as a district. The very last thing is, speaking of togetherness, March is coming. So we have to march together. I think it's great that March means the month and it means how we can move. So I think we need to march together. Ms. Ms. Liz, you can have that. That's great. I've just made it up and I give it to you. We need to march together. Feel free to put it on things and give me a small amount of credit. I am complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Calip?
So I'd like to say thank you for all the presentations that was given today. There is definitely a lot about budget and money, which is. A lot for me to take in personally, but besides that, I'm excited to see what other information and things that I can learn regarding district changes. Such as the new science and engineering curriculum that's being in place for students and for their own benefits. I'm excited to see how that impacts them for their growing up. And overall, I'm excited to see my next steps as student trustee.
Thank you. Trustee Cypressette?
I would like to start off with saying thank you to all the presentations today. It was very informative, especially for me, a new student board rep. Who does not know much about this sector of the district. More, I know more about like my own experience and students' experiences. So it was interesting to learn about the behind-the-scenes look at the district. I would like to add that I agree with trustee Phillips because the wasps are very, very. Very mean. It actually happened to me today, just today. I was eating lunch outside. And my whole friend group was being surrounded and attacked by not just like two wasps, like seven wasps were just circling around us. And I was very scared to eat my food, so. But if we can find a way to combat that issue, that would be great. And besides that, I think that's all I have to say for today. Thank you for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, for my comments, I want to start by thanking, I've noticed on social media, a lot of families have been getting involved in their schools this year. And some of you are always involved, or like, yeah, of course, this year for me has been like. Very eye-opening, the amount of people that I see involved in social media and their parent pages. So I just want to thank all the parents involved because that only makes schools stronger. I also, I just want to thank our district because I think that. We, as other school districts, are attacking. Minority communities such as the Jewish community and the LGBTQ community throughout the state, some really close to us. We reinforce that we stand for every student and we do it every year and we do it unapolo- unapolo- unapologetically. And I just want to thank staff for doing that because it's not just about raising the flags. It's about talking about it at school. It's about defending students when they're being attacked. It's about supporting students when they're seeing it in their communities. So. And we see it in our own community sometimes, but our schools are a safe space, safe space for everyone. So I just wanted to lift that because just today, a school district that is ten minutes away. They're trying to pass a resolution against LGBTQ students. And we would never stand for that. So I'm just thankful that we're part of this community and that we continue to reinforce it. And I did want to give a quick shout out, and I already spoke to her, but I wanted to thank Ms. Sanders and her team, Dr. Hurst. I've been really impressed this year with our communications department, and I think I spoke about it at the last meeting, but I've been even more impressed just in the last two weeks. Just the air quality communication that came out today and yesterday. It was pretty clear, right? And people always have their opinion, but we are, we're on top of it. And so I just wanted to thank the communications department for the work they've been doing on top of the campaign. On attendance, on top of the everyday communications from sites. So just a quick shout out for them. And that's it for me. Our next regular board meeting on October, it's October eleventh here at Levanya de Jean. Thank you so much. I adjourn us at nine oh eight.